Admiral, radar shows that we have liberals approaching at 3 o'clock and libertarians at 9 o'clock and conservatives at 6 o'clock. They're coming from every angle, every viewpoint.
Hey, Green Bay. This is Political Radar, episode number two, I guess. Wow. I know we've been doing this a long time, but we kind of renamed things. So today, we're talking school board. I'm here with John Yonkey. Hi, John.
Yeah, Elliot, how you doing?
I'm amazing. Today is, I don't know what the date is, Thursday, the 7th of February. It's snowstorm, I don't know, something with the sea. Chase?
Chase, that's it.
Yeah, passed it on the way after passing WLUK on Lombardi. Yeah. So let's kind of jump right into it. Why are you running for school board? Give me your background.
Well, I'll try to make this a quick story. It's kind of long, but so I was, I worked for 20 years for Coca-Cola. I was a truck driver, and so I enjoyed doing that. And then I had gone back to school. I was going to college to advance myself at Coca-Cola. And around that time, we had the birth of our second son, John. And as John was growing up, we realized something was wrong. And John, it turns out John has a disability. John has autism, and he's 10, and he's still nonverbal. But as I was going through that process, we had to go do a lot of IEP meetings, a lot of things to try to help John and advocate for his services. And as I was doing that, I had people tell me how fortunate my son was to have me as an advocate, and how lucky my son was to have my wife and I. And I just, I know it was meant as a compliment.
I'm sorry, what kind of meeting?
IEP meeting. So an IEP is an individual education plan, and kids with disabilities have what are called IEPs. And you go to a meeting to set up the customized education. It's supposed to be, as it says, individualized to the child. And so we would go to these meetings, and I'd have district officials and teachers tell me how fortunate my son was to have my wife and I. And I thought, I get it's a compliment, you know, but my son shouldn't have to be lucky. My son shouldn't have to win a birth lottery to get the services he needs. And so as I was going to school, I decided, as you take some of those gen ed courses, and you're taking different human development courses, I found that interesting. Finding out about different, how different cultures interact with, you know, different systems was interesting to me. And so I switched my degree. And I told my wife, I said, I'm not going to get a business degree. I'm going to focus on human development, and I'm going to try to get a job as an advocate for people with disabilities. And she said, can you make money doing that? And I said, we're going to find out.
No.
And so.
You still married?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still married. Yeah, 20, coming on 25 years now. And so, and then I found a job with, there's a federal grant called Wisconsin Promise, and it works with teens with disabilities who are on government systems, and it works to help them get skills to reduce their dependence on government systems. And so self advocacy skills, understanding how their benefits work, if they start, how their benefits change if they start working, and different things like that, just so they can be more ready. And so I did that. And so then I met a whole different group of people, because these are different disabilities. You meet with people with wide-ranging disabilities, and, and some of them from this area, because I cover a big area, but some of them from the Green Bay area. And I found people were having, having similar struggles with the school district. And, and again, what I say all the time, I don't think anyone in the school district is trying to hold any child back. I think there's differences of opinion, and families don't always know how to navigate the systems, because they don't have the skills, and the results aren't good. And so I started going to school board meetings. And then I saw other things that bothered me. I feel like the school board hasn't always been as transparent as it can be. I feel like there's been members on the board who defer to public relations, or defer to different people, and that bothers me. It's an elected position. They should, they should be accountable for what they vote on. And so, and I decided, you know, there's things I want to see changed. The next natural step is to try to get into a position where I can change them. And so I don't know everything I can do until you get there. I mean, the school board touches a lot of things. It has a $272 million budget. It's a larger budget than the city of Green Bay. And so there's opportunities within there to make sure we're giving kids the best opportunities to succeed. And not kids, but all kids. To make sure whether, whatever socioeconomic class they come from, whatever disability they're facing, whatever thing is going on, that we get them what they need. So I think Green Bay has some good programs, like the John Dewey Academy, or the Leonardo da Vinci School for Gifted Learners. But we're sure we're making that available to all kids. And are we sure that's in, and when we do these other things, is it, are we segregating just to segregate, or does it make sense? Are we offering it a true opportunity?
So, so I mentioned before, we got on about MACS, and, you know, so we were in talks about the John Dewey Academy. So are you familiar with those?
Yep. So the John Dewey Academy, it's a, it's project-based learning. And so what they do at, at John Dewey Academy is it's sort of, they build a curriculum within a project. So a kid works on a project, and then you build your math skills within there, or your writing skills. And I think it's a good model. And I think there's kids that who do well on it. But my concern, whenever we have these choice schools, is the family generally has to provide transportation. So who's getting left out of being able to go to that choice school because of transportation? And also sometimes, and I don't know what the breakdown is at the schools, are we moving kids there because of some other reason, when it's not necessarily a good fit? Like, are we moving behavioral kids there? And is that the right solution? And so that's my only, so there's been questions that have come up about charter schools, and I'm not against them per se, but I'm not necessarily for them. So what is the, what is the goal, and are we reaching that goal? And also, when we do that, is it available to everyone? And transportation is a huge issue. When I work with families, most of my families are on systems, and that's a huge problem. I mean, if a car breaks down, or depending on a work schedule. And so if we're going to have these opportunities available, we need to address those needs for those families, so they can access. Because what if there's a family where that's the best fit? Project learning is the best fit, but that family can't get transportation?
That's a great point, because MACS walks to school now. We actually moved where we moved, so that MACS could go to Lombardi, go to Southwest, walk to school. I don't even know where John Dewey is. So now we got to figure that out.
Yeah. Yes, yeah. And so, you know, and that was a struggle. You know, my son, we had choiced him to Aldo Leopold, and we were fortunate, we were able to, to transport him to and from. But he was really happy when we got back to West, because then he could walk to and from school, and you have that independence. So, because that's the other thing, and sort of just to, not to make a segue on you, but something that came up yesterday was when we talk about, so much is focused on education and curriculum. But much of, you know, when was the last time you heard of someone getting fired because they didn't have their email grammatically correct? I mean, that's not why. So it's, it's interpersonal skills. And so within the school day, where we're building an opportunity for kids to work together, so they can build those interpersonal skills, so they can understand how relationships work and work together. Because that's still a bigger.
That is so well put. So, so I teach at UWGB. Like, I have like 18 part-time jobs.
Okay.
So, so one of my part-time jobs is I do Introduction to Computer Science out at GB. And the career services woman was, she gave a little presentation to my classes. And she was talking about the things that employers look for.
Yep.
And grammar was, it was on the list, but it was down.
Because you do. I mean, not, not to completely minimize it, because obviously you want to...
But it was mixed in communication skills.
Exactly. And so that's something an employer can work with. You can't teach, or it's really hard to teach those interpersonal skills. It's really hard to teach, you know, especially when you become an adult, to teach how to just recognize that other people have feelings and emotions, and they're three-dimensional. And so if we're not providing children an opportunity to do that, we're missing out. And so I wish I could tell you I have the solution of how to do that. But I think you, some of that is making sure we hire the right principals, and we hire staff who understand how to collaborate and work together.
So, all right, I have so many questions. I don't know where to start. Okay.
That's fine.
So, so we, as we know, as I'm sure you know, our superintendent announced that she's going to step down next year. So you are, you know, if you get elected, you're going to be in charge of hiring our new superintendent?
Yes.
So how are you going to do that?
So I think the superintendent is, I think it's important. And so I think part of what I would look for in that is, is, is there someone who is, when they're hiring other people, who, you know, when they're going to bring in people? Are they bringing people that, that have an open mind about having integration, and having kids work together, and collaboration? And the other, and are they comfortable making decisions? Because part of what I look at, so since 2012, I think I brought this stat up at the, at the recent forum, where since 2012, we've, we've increased administrative spending by 56% in the district. But when we had to have, we spent $400,000 to have a study done on what to do at Washington Middle School, which is an administrative-level decision. And so my concern, and questions I'd be asking if we're on a board that I'd want to address is, why are we, if we're spending more money, and we're increasing administrative-level spending, why are we farming out administrative-level decisions?
You mean, why did we hire somebody with a PhD in education that should have the answers?
Yeah. And so that concerns me. I mean, and I met with Michelle. I, you know, I got along with her. I think she's in this for the right reasons. But, but that gives me pause. That makes me wonder. And so I'd want someone who's comfortable making that decision, and who isn't going to, you know, if we're going to spend the kind of money we spend on superintendents, because I think the average salary is now getting well north of $200,000 a year, that person should be comfortable making administrative-level decisions. And so that's what I'd look at, is what is your background? Have you made decisions like this before? What has been the impact of those decisions you've made? Because we need to do one of two things. We either need to reduce our administrative-level spending, so we can farm out administrative-level decisions, or we need to move those decisions back to the people that are hired to make them.
So, what is the job of a superintendent?
And that's a difficult question. So I think the superintendent.
It should be difficult.
Well, but I've found, and it's interesting, because I've asked people that, you know, I've asked, because I have friends who are, I have a friend that lives on the other side of the state, and she's on a school board. Because in my job, we work across the state, and so one of the other ones on a school board. And it's tough. And so I think part of what a lot of them, there is to oversee the principals and the administration of the school, and how these policy decisions are enacted. And some of that is to, to bring to the board policy decisions for them to board, to be able to vote on. And so a lot of that is more of just the director, and then bringing in different policies, and then, you know, depending on if there's money involved, and obviously the school board has to vote on it. But the superintendent, especially with a doctor, you know, with a PhD in education, should be bringing in well-informed programs, and being, being able to explain how they work. Because the other thing, sometimes I think the district is making good decisions, but they're not getting that out to the public. The public doesn't understand sort of these decisions that are being made. And I don't think they always, and that's the transparency part. They're not always sharing how this, how these decisions are made, what they think the impact is going to be, and then following up on that impact. Because I still, and maybe I need to do more research. I haven't seen the results of that $400,000 they've spent. What was the decision? What did we pay for? As a taxpayer. So there's, yeah. So, but I think that's her role.
Well, you know what? When you do find out, you need to come back here, and we're going to have some charts.
Yeah.
A nice Venn diagram, or a pie chart. Okay. So, so, and I do want this to be about really, okay. So to the average person who's listening, and which I know that the people who are listening and watching are not average people. Okay?
Okay.
They're the above-average people. They tend to be plugged in. But even, even the people that are watching this, if, if you ask them, what does the school board do? What does the superintendent do? What does the Department of Public Instruction do? What does the executive, what, what is it even called? The, the Executive Director of Secondary Education in the, why?
So DPI.
What do we have all these levels for?
So bringing up DPI, that was interesting to me. So I've been on the, the State Superintendent Parent Advisory Council for the last three years. And so I'd go to these DPI meetings, and I'd hear, I'd go to these meetings, and I'd hear these good ideas about inclusion and community engagement, and I wonder why it's not happening. And I come back to my school, and, and then I find out, well, DPI does a lot of things. And there's different laws and rules. They make sure, as far as if you're following an IEP, and there's different regulations that they can enforce. But most of what they do, when they talk about like policy, it's more recommendation to school districts. This is a study we did. This is things we think you should do. But they can't make a school district do any of that.
So we should just get rid of it?
Well, I don't know. But I think, I don't know about that, because I don't know that a school district, so if DPI is working right, and they're doing studies, and they're making good recommendations to school boards, that's not, so if you put that on each school board to do that study on their own, or to find that on their own, that puts a lot of burden on local taxpayers. So I think the theory behind having DPI, or at least, and this is just me, my opinion.
Sounds like an organization that was created pre-internet.
Probably, yeah.
Because I'm, you know, I, you know, if studies are done, and they're out there, there's Google, there's Wikipedia, the information is out there.
But I think part of what, and the other thing they can do is they can help you organize between school districts, so that you're not having to reach out to other school districts. You have DPI officials going around. And so I think when it...
Is that hard to do?
Um, it can be, if you're in a rural school district especially.
Like, do we not have phones in rural school districts, or email?
I don't, but yeah, and the other, that's a separate issue, as far as where they're at with technology and openness to technology. Because that's something that I've shared different, when we go back to the community engagement piece. A lot of the families that I ran into that were disconnected, how I found them was on Facebook, and sent them a Facebook Messenger message. And so I've asked at schools, if you have families that aren't showing up, are you trying Facebook? Well, we can't communicate with them on Facebook. And it's like, or there seems to be, I shouldn't say I've heard, there seems to be varying opinions on whether or not that's okay.
Right.
But to me, especially when you have families in poverty, they may lose their cellphone, they may move around, they may lose their house. They keep access to the Facebook account. And so, because they can get on any computer, when they get a new phone, they log in again.
Right.
And so in Facebook Messenger now, you can reach, you know, I have families, and I have families, you know, when they run out of minutes, and I can't get a hold of them on their phone, I can get a hold of them through Facebook Messenger. And so that's just one example. I mean, but we have to find new ways as a district, or as people work within a district to engage families.
It's just a thing. Like, I mean, what's the difference? What, how you get in touch with people? I mean, people used to have a phone number, it used to be in a phone book.
And to me, if you just do it, and if you're worried about having it on your private Facebook account, then have a, have a professional Facebook account.
Yeah.
Have a, you know, there's ways around that problem, to just say, we can't do that, because it's social media. You know, and there's, they say there's privacy concerns, but I guess I'd like to see that addressed. What's the privacy concern?
Right. So, all right. So, okay, one quick thing. Okay. So about, about like superintendents and all these layers.
Yep.
Personally, this is my personal opinion. You gave your personal opinion on some things. So I think they're overpaid. And I recognize other districts, blah, 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 they all pay, blah, blah, blah. Okay. But other organizations do not. So this is an over glorified executive director, executive directors of other organizations make 50 to 100,000. They do not make in the neighborhood of 200,000. I don't understand. I don't understand. I don't understand. If, if the district is too big, let's make the district smaller. If, and these, and, and we already have, we have levels, we have layers. What are the layers all about, if it's not about helping the size? The math doesn't compute to me.
Yeah.
Pay higher and have more people, one or one...
Because that's been part of my concern, is I think, and I'd have to go back to look, I couldn't find budget books from before 2012. But I thought, when I moved here in 2002, that Niran was a superintendent, and I don't think there was assistant superintendents. I could be wrong. But now we have, I think, four quadrant assistant superintendents, and each one of them is collecting a salary, plus the salary of the superintendent has gone up. And that's a concern I have, where we, when we talk about...
I don't understand what most people do.
Yeah. And so, and part of my problem is, so when we say, we don't have money for this program, or we don't have money to put into the classroom, but I think you find money for what you put a priority on. And we've clearly put a priority on administrative-level spending, and we've found money for it. So why don't we make a priority, things that get in front of kids?
I want to cut that to zero and start over.
Yeah.
And like, and then, then find where we have the needs, and then we'll spend some money.
Because I do think there's something.
We're hiring professional teachers that know how to teach.
Yeah. And so I think, and that's part of the problem is, so now that these have been created, how do you roll that back? You know, how do you unravel that?
Let's just get rid of them.
Because that's, well.
You're in, you're in charge. I'm saying, look, just get rid of them. You're in charge.
Well, I mean, and, but the other part is, as far as these positions have contracts, the school board is committed. And, but that's something that, when I get there, as we're looking at these decisions, those are things I'm going to look at. Because to me, the priority, and what I would look at as a priority, is spending in the classroom. I mean, how do we get more of that funding into the classroom? And, and as a separate debate, when you hear talk of unions, or you hear this debate, we talk about how the teacher union has driven up costs. But these administrative-level positions are non-union, non-bargaining positions, and the school board can't control that cost.
It's a bigger problem.
And so why are we, why are we vilifying one group, but not the other?
Yep. Yep. We have to, we have to keep a handle on costs over.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm a fan of the taxpayer, right?
Yep.
But I'm a fan of teachers, and I'm a fan of students.
And so I don't think you do cuts just to do cuts. I get frustrated when that happens. But I think everything needs to be looked at, looked at somewhat, as much as you can, like a cost-benefit analysis, you know, where, what is the impact off those dollars? So if you're spending $400,000 on a study, what is that impact? Or if you're creating a community engagement position that's going to pay $50,000 a year, have you increased community engagement? Do you have families that weren't engaged before that are engaged now?
Measuring, measuring results in a school district?
And so I think you need to...
Blasphemy!
Yeah. And so some of that, when you, you know, and if you, and if you've, you know, I hear, you know, my understanding is they've been doing more inclusion, and having more inclusive classes with kids with disabilities, and without working together. But can you show what are the improvements, or lack of improvement? Most of the studies that I've looked up, and I have one here, I could give you the citation later. But when you have fully inclusive classrooms, everybody does better. Not just for kids with disabilities, kids without disabilities.
Sure.
But can we prove that in our own, have we taken, have we studied that? In schools where we've switched, do we find that? Because I, that's going back to cost analysis. So if we, we can find a way to educate kids more inclusively, and we have fewer of these separate classrooms, that reduces costs, you know. And so there's, but I think everything has to be looked at that, because the, the taxpayer, you have to be responsible to the taxpayer. And if you're going to ask them to spend more money, you have to tell them why it makes sense.
So a last thing, only because you're going to be in charge of hiring this person. So when I was actively part of the Green Bay, or the Brown County Taxpayer Association, a past superintendent, not the current one, came in there, good for him, and said, the school board offered me this amount of money, would you say no if you were offered this amount of money, and looked everybody in the eye? And nobody had anything to say. So, you know, if you're on the school board, maybe don't offer that much money.
Well, and I think that's, you have to make, and I think that's when, that's where the school board's job comes down to. People are telling you it costs this much, but have you done the research to know that it costs that much? Do you have to offer the guy that much money? What can you, can you, and if you have two candidates, and one is asking for so much, what is that trade-off? And I think...
I also don't know why we're hiring people from Minnesota. I mean, nothing against somebody from Minnesota. I'm sure her, her heart's in the right place. You know, I'm not a fan of the production that she's produced so far. But we have 100,000 people in this city. We can't find somebody that can work for $100,000, that can run our school district? We can't find, we can't find one person?
Yeah. And I don't know. And, and that's the other part, is as far as the transparency, do we know everyone who applied? Do we know that someone from the area did apply?
I just have a hard time believing we have 100,000 people in our community, and we can't, we don't have one person who can, who can run the joint for $100,000?
But you have the, and I guess I don't know, is that, is that a DPI requirement to have that PhD level?
Should it be?
Well, that's a separate debate, as far as it should be. Because I don't know that that's something on a, and so that's something that, you know, obviously, if I'm there, that you look into. I mean, why, you know, because, because once you start making it a, you have to have a PhD in education, then obviously your talent pool becomes more restricted. And I think that's a requirement. I think that's a state law. I mean, obviously, that's the other problem. And I talked to you about this when, when I agreed to do this, where I don't know everything. So because...
That's great.
Because the school board is far reaching.
I think, I think there's, I think not knowing everything, there's, I think going into things and asking questions is, is the wisest thing that anybody can do.
And I think that's part of what I hope to bring, is that, you know, to ask questions.
I don't know everything either.
Is this the best use of our money? But also, I just, I didn't, I knew it had a big budget. I didn't realize it was a bigger budget than the city of Green Bay.
I don't think most people understand this.
And that's, and then, and that, and so as you're making decisions about that money, find out what exactly can we do? You know, what, what are the rules? And are these, are these guidelines, or are these rules? And how can we look to be better? Because whatever position you're in, you have to be, we have to be better steward.
Yeah. I have a hard time believing that if we hired somebody that didn't have a PhD, that they would put our school board in prison. I would have a hard time believing that.
Yeah.
Or that they would sue us. The state would sue us. I would, I have a hard time believing that. So, all right. So, so kind of circling back to what is actually important. So we had a high-profile teacher leave the district, and, you know, some, you know, there was some discussion about Washington Middle School and all of that. So how do we, you know, talk to me about Washington Middle School, and how can we attract and retain good teachers?
Well, part of what, and so I was asked this question yesterday with another group I spoke to. And I think part of that is, when I go to these school board meetings, teachers aren't involved in the conversation. We need to engage with teachers. We need to ask teachers, are we doing exit interviews about why people are leaving? And what are we learning from those exit interviews? And I think that's the same, whatever community, the same thing with, with family engagement. So if we're saying that we're not reaching minority communities, we need to find and identify people within minority communities that are engaged, and talk to them, and find out how we become more engaged. And teachers, we need to talk to teachers, and go to a union meeting, do exit interviews, and say, why are you leaving? And if there, if we have a district nearby that's attracting teachers, what are they doing? What are they offering? And so for a bunch of people who aren't teachers to sit up and think we're going to solve the problem, is, it doesn't make sense. You have to engage with the people that you're losing, and find out why you're losing them. I think that's the...
Well, similar, similar to that. So we, so we had, you know, we have some, some issues with Washington Middle School. Have you looked into that at all?
The, like, what's, yeah. So what confuses me about Washington Middle School, is so Washington Middle School, we have all these behavior problems. We have police there all the time. We have all these issues. But East High doesn't have the same level of problems. And the same kids are going from Washington to middle school. The one school feeds to the other. And so as a district, you need to look at what's different, what's happening? It can't just be the age group. Because I know middle school is a tougher age group. I mean, it's, you know, there's biological things and whatever that create some, that more angst in middle school. There's a reason, that's why there's lots of books written about it, that's all that. But this is bigger than that. And why is it going away when they go to, or not, why is it lessened when they're going to East, if it's the same group of kids? And I don't know the answer to that. You know, I don't, but I think we need to research it and find out, and talk to the teachers, what's different? What do we, you know, and maybe with keeping privacy in mind, identifying kids that you had a lot of trouble with at Washington, and what's happening with them at East that you're not having trouble with them. So is there a kid that was a big behavior problem at Washington? And find a discreet way to find out from that kid what changed? What's different about your school experience that, that we're not having these issues?
So without having a half-million-dollar study done, what, how would you approach fixing this?
I think, again, engaging the teachers and getting, because it bothers me when I go there, that the only time teachers are at school board meetings are when they're, I think they're assigned certain times, or they have to attend one of you. But I don't even think it's all teachers. I think certain groups, but they're not, it doesn't feel like they feel comfortable coming to the board and sharing their stories. And I don't know, I don't know what's happened before, or why that is. But I think it all is, what is the support they think that they're missing, and how can we provide it?
So as a citizen, and I'm relatively engaged, it seems that the board in general was sort of dismissive of the Washington Middle School issue, especially upfront. I think, I think it goes beyond just that. So I think what I've felt like, is it almost like it flies on autopilot? Like, you reapprove these contracts, you just, and you sort of don't rock the boat, and you, and you just move ahead. And so I think, and so I think then, when you have an area that has a problem, I think that can manifest and get, if you're used to just sort of, this is how we, you know, this is how we've always done it, so this is how we're going to do it. And obviously, I've been spoken to anyone personally that's told me that. But as a citizen, my opinion, sitting back, is things just kind of move along. And I think that can be dangerous when you have, have an area that's concerned, because then you think, oh, this is just an anomaly. This is just a rough year. We'll just keep doing what we're doing. And you miss out on changing things. Let's just say, so we're two citizens, right? So let's just say it was a rough year. My recommendation was, why didn't the school board, the very next meeting, say, you know what? Let's have our next school board meeting at Washington. Why did that not happen? Why do, why doesn't that always happen?
You know, and that's another thing that, I think that the school board is doing some things, where they're changing meeting times and stuff like that. But I think that's an idea I hadn't thought of, but that's a great idea. Why not move the location of the school board meeting? Why not bring it right to that school and say, we're going to have it, we're going to have a meeting on this issue?
I heard some nonsense, they have AV equipment, blah, blah, blah.
You can't tell me you can't move that.
I have, I have AV in my hand. Come on.
The other thing is, you can't tell me you can't have, have an informal meeting just to address that issue. You can't have a, a different, you still have your regular meeting at the school, where you normally have it, and do, because again, you have to engage with that community. That community felt left out of the process.
Well, we are all that community.
Yep.
I don't have a child that goes to Washington Middle School. But that is, I live in Green Bay. That is my community. These are my people.
Well, that's the other part.
I am offended by that. I'm offended by, by creating this, like us versus them. Like that, this is not a them, this is us.
Yeah. What, and I agree with that. But, but what I'm saying is, like, in particular, the families that were directly affected within that school felt left out. But you're right, as far as we're all affected by all schools. So even if you don't have children, you likely work somewhere where you're gonna work with someone who came out of there.
Right.
You're gonna want them to be able to contribute. Cause the other thing that I talk about is, as baby boomers are retiring, there's gonna be a big void in the economy and we need everybody.
All hands on deck.
Yeah. So people with disabilities, minorities, everyone needs to be trained and ready to go. And so that.
Baby boomers want their social security. We need people to be able to pay it.
Exactly. And so kids from the near west side need to work, kids from the near east side need to work.
Right.
And so it, it can't just be, and so, yeah. So that affects everybody. And so those, and so if you complain about the service or, you know, the interaction you have when you're out in the community with someone, maybe you should care more about the system they came from.